We're ready.
I'm gonna get down.
Well, I was gonna let you set up.
Oh, I'm getting back in the peanut gallery.
Well, appreciate everybody showing up this early today for this. So, uh, real quick, we're here to discuss cluster option development. So just, I'm gonna read the purposes. Cluster development option is established to encourage clustering residential development, promoting more creative design options based on the size, shape, natural resources of a site, constraints which have direct implications for development. The primary purpose of the option is to maintain open space, preserve natural environmental features, and enhance design which may not be practical under traditional development standards. So county commission requested that we review some developments. Uh, some of the things that, that were brought up during their recommendation to come down to us was the fact that these developments, uh, they have smaller lot sizes. We see in here they allow fifteen thousand square foot lot size. Uh, it obviously pulls houses together with just the name Cluster Development. And then you end up with, uh, as with most subdivisions, you know, it's not like it's a special design elements. It's, you end up with detention ponds in your common area typically, things of that nature. Real quick, show you two cluster option developments in the county. This is the Oaks off at, at the end of North Shore on the left-hand side. This is a, that is a cluster option development. On this, this is a PUD, but this is a cluster option development. And then off of Bill's Chapel to the Turner. This development here was designed off cluster option development. So one of the things, you know, they mentioned, well, you know, detention ponds don't need to be in the common area. We're using the common areas not to create, protect natural open space, but it's detention and things of that nature. That's obviously, I will say this, the, the common area is where we want detention. We want the homeowners, they're required, and our regulations, they're required to establish an association entity to supervise maintaining open space. That's, but also the common, uh, the detention we want. So here's some changes in May of twenty twenty-four. This is the changes that happened in Cluster. It went from being the R-one into the new R-two zoning district. So you have to request rezoning of R-two. Let me see if you have to have a special exception to do this. You also still yet have to have a special exception in the R-two zoning. The previous cluster option development, you took out twenty percent of the overall acreage for infrastructure. When that was revised, it went to twenty-five percent. So we increased the amount of developable land by five percent additional. We also took the minimum lot size. So when you take twenty percent off the overall area, that tells you how much land you have left to develop. You divide that by the density of the zoning district, which at the time was twenty thousand square feet. That is now twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty to be a true half acre. So we've also increased the, that density. So we've pulled these, these developments down, the developable area, we have significantly reduced it by those numbers. Some of the things that it requires, these cluster option developments, you know, our sub-rigs do require sidewalks. Of course, we do have developments that have requested variances from that due to the nature of the development, size of developments. Clusters still require it. You have a fifteen thousand square foot lot size. It does a later setback reductions to go from thirty in a R-one to twenty-five, fifteen on the sides, and it allows a thirty-foot, uh, twenty-foot rear yard setback rather than a twenty-five, which is in the R-one. So that's some of the give and take. It requires sewer connection, which everything in the R-two requires sewer connection. We still have a hundred-foot lock width, but we can reduce down to a fifteen thousand square foot lot. So they take their overall development, they say, if I was doing, divide this by twenty-one seven eighty, that would be our half acre lots that's required in the R-one. I can have X amount of lots. Now I can put X amount of lots, reduce them down to fifteen thousand square foot, and essentially taking that land and creating more open space. That's how the cluster option is set up. So when commission discussed, you know, the open space, what we use the open space for, uh, based on the developments you see, if you're familiar with them, you know, we, it is what it is. It's space that we don't have a house on, that's about all it's useful for. We didn't put detention in there. But on the same token, they were discussing, what can we do to get the, basically not to have the detention ponds be a part of that? I'm not sure at this point, you know, I've looked, I thought, well, do you require larger buffering on the back of the lots? Is that one of the things you do? So my exterior lots that border adjacent properties do increase buffering there. Well, most of these houses are already set forward to save the infrastructure costs, driveways, water lines, sewer lines. They're already pulling these lots forward. So most of them set way further off the rear property than twenty. I don't know anything additional we would do as far as trying to address detention in the common space. And keeping in mind that the, when it takes off that twenty-five percent, that is part of the infrastructure reduction, is for that detention, roads and things of that nature. It's obviously something a developer may wanna do because people, some people do want the smaller lot sizes, and it probably, and it can save them development costs because of pulling things forward as they have here, push smaller lots up front, save on infrastructure costs. But ultimately, we were asked to look into this, look at this for, to get recommendations, ideas of, of what we, how to say this, what we may wanna address, what we need to address, if we need to address. It comes down to some things that, based on location of this type of developments, we're already mandating it has to be where sewer is available. So it's kind of like a restrictive area. Are the things that's for Phil's lap? If we're gonna allow the smaller lots in these developments are the things we need to address within that. I've heard some recommendations, some would like to do away with them. I don't know what the pleasure of the board is, but this is what we were asked to look at, was this particular section of our zone. That's about all the skill I have.
Um, the one there at the end of North Shore Farmstead is, what, they just have some vacant lots that they're not gonna build on? Or is it just their retention ponds that are, detention ponds that are open space?
Their detention ponds are located in the open space. So this is Farmstead. So they take in the overall land, they created, however many lots we can have, and they created the lot sizes, right? This is their open space that they were required by the rig, and obviously they will put the detention in that. Which in my opinion, I've really had detention shown in the common area than has an easement on a lot. I think it probably takes out some of the thought process of who's responsible for keeping it up as opposed to having easements, you know, with lot lines. I think that's a...
But there's no requirement that they have to improve the open space at all? No parks, no?
No.
Nothing.
And, and if, um, the open space, and this is one note, so, and this is part of what, you know, when you read this, the one note, when we get down to the requirements, the open space shall be integrated throughout the development, including sensitive environmental areas and identified as part of the subdivision approval process. So the ones I'm familiar with and the one that will most likely be seen next month, we've already got a plastic middle for another one. They usually pull the open spaces to the peripheral areas or wherever they need detention, wherever's less desirable to develop for lack of better words. That's where they'll create the open space. And I don't know how you would address it differently. You know, when it says, open space shall be integrated throughout the development, I don't know that I would say that's integrated throughout the development. On the same token, I don't know what we would be looking for as a planning commission to say, based on the lot size or the size of the development, how much, do you just sporadically put a open space between some blocks and blocks? It'd just be whatever it might be.
Well, that land always belonged to that development.
Well, it'll be a part of our HOA, yes. And, and you know, R-one developments, even if we're doing subdivision in R-one zoning or any of our zoning compliant lot sizes and developments, you could have common space, open space. This kind of like gets into, kind of like PUDs used to talk about creating these unique developments. We just don't see a distribution of open space maybe that this might have intended.
I think some of the things I've seen over the years, as this development happens and retention ponds are installed and this open space and greenways and stuff like that, what I've noticed is a lot of these HOAs have kind of just went either bankrupt or doesn't have the funding to maintain those things.
Yep.
Then they face a washout or some kind of erosion control or some kind of remediation of the retention pond, and they don't have money to do that. And then the developers already skipped tail, uh, got the money out of the development. So, you know, there's, there's a long-term commitment to that, that I think a lot of times in the early phase, that the developers set it up with good intentions, but over twenty years.
And I agree, that's part of it. There's a development that... Someone called, they're trying to eliminate their homeowner association. I did explain to them, you know, eliminating this isn't a wise idea. Uh, you all are responsible for the maintenance of your detention and your common area. And fortunately, we've not had to encounter where something's failed and the counties had to come in and seek legal action to make them improve it. But it is a problem with a lot of subdivisions. I don't know if it will be out here based on the type of development. It could be in the future. But again, they asked us to look at this, one, again, this, some of the things they said, well, they're putting detention ponds in their open space. I agree. I don't know how you change any parameters at this point. Well, I get, let me back up. You can change what are parameters you want to. That's why I did discuss of what parameters we've already increased, that's already redup, reduce that amount of development.
Well, I read, I went and found a whole bunch of cluster from other areas and read what other people were doing. You know, like some of them had a minimum percentage for the open space. Um, and you know, you talked about that got increased. Some of them had, uh, all the houses had to face the open space or had sidewalks that took them to the open space. I think with them, with, under the new regulations, with them having, have it rezoned and have the overlay, that gives us some power over, is there value in making, you know, is there value in allowing that to take place, that cluster versus just a standard one with what they present? And we could turn that, if they don't present something that brings value, you know, to shrinking the lot sizes and doing that, then we could, we could deny that, and then they could, they would still be able to do a, a regular, uh, development there with the same lot number.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. But if, if, and, and so I see what you're saying, we've got an open space that's an actual usable space.
Mm-hmm.
Whether it's...
I mean, I mean, I, I, I think, I mean, I, I liked, I liked the concept of a cluster because that gives, like, instead of just having house, 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 surrounded by house, 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 you actually have some green space or you have, you know, I mean, I understand why Leon brought it about having to, you know, maintain, you know, like, how, how much effort is it gonna be to maintain? But how much say do we, how much say would we have? I, I guess that would be my, my thought is that if they don't present something that's, how can we, if we were gonna change the rig, how can we put the power into us that we say, no, you don't, you don't bring value to it in, in that regard?
So where you have the, uh, the twenty-five percent for infrastructure? And we're, we're kind, we're kind of, I guess, using that as open space also. I think we'd have to designate, like you said, a percentage of open space that is used in a specific manner, designating that. And then whatever other things you wanted, you know, you mentioned...
I just...
How much space do you need? How is that space to be used and maintained by the development? Now, could we enforce it in the future? If it was just an open grassland for picnic area that has a sidewalk with it and leading to it, uh, I don't know who would enforce them to maintain that in the future. But like you said, uh, we would, we would need to put something in there that actually, rather than just coming up and saying, well, we would rather you do this with your open space. I think we need something that identifies what you're using. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I, I think that needs to be part of the presentation on why, you know, I mean, it can't just be a detention pond and then a little bit of, you know, you know, there, there should be a plan, like, you know, some kind of concept to sell it, you know, to, to bring value to that property by doing the cluster option.
I disagree. I mean, it's similar to what the PUDs were...
Intended, yeah.
Do you think it's legal long-term if we, if the county continues to do this kind of thing? That we have a language in it to protect the entity within itself or the development? You know, a developer's not wanna, is not gonna wanna go through the process of posting a bond and keeping that bond to the county of Loud. But can that percentage of the HOA involvement, as that development transfers over and as they release, the developer releases it to the HOA, could the, the, the code or the reg call that the HOA would have to maintain a long-term bond with the county to make sure that all that long-term maintenance on any of that would be sustained or sustained?
Oh, I'd have to look into that.
Right now, you don't have, right now, you don't have any control over the HOA.
Not now, it's more...
We don't, and, and I would have to read back through the regs again, where it talks about, uh, detention and responsibilities, you know, for upkeep and everything. There's some verbiage in there to where it's almost like a, if I'm not mistaken, it's almost like you're responsible for maintaining and keeping it up, and if you don't, unless it's turned over to the county, which I can't imagine any county wanting someone to turn over their detention in stormwater. But the county would have to step in and, and mediate that. Of course, if you do that, you're gonna have to go install the property owners and keep that. I'd have to reread to see what that verbiage actually is. But to your point, I would have to check to see if the county can require an ongoing bond for infrastructure and stormwater, uh, on a private property, for lack of better words, an ongoing bond. But I'll look into it.
I think some of the cities have been impacted by that. And there was some discrepancies as far as that exactly what had happened. The HOA didn't have the money to do it. We thought that TDEC was gonna make a, a city, city entity step into it and, and make the corrective action on it. I do think that there are some renewing bonds that automatically always claims, uh, the county of Loud and would have to be notified if that bond expired, and they would be the only body that could, could, uh, non-renew that, and it's automatically renewed. But that's just where I see the long-term stuff in the experience I've dealt with the HOAs like that.
Right.
The retention pond is always the elephant in the room of that long-term. Because it's gonna fill up over time, and you're gonna have to clean it out, and those homeowners have no idea about stormwater, so.
Yeah, and there was not a, I don't know, any maintenance scheduled that anyone has in place, uh, to, to go out and take care of that. Any other thoughts? So, so right now, it's, let me ask you this, anybody looking, think we should just do away with these?
How many of them are there in the county cluster minus?
I mean, I only come up with the ones that, the Silver Oaks is about around oh-five. I know where it is. I know this one is, and we have another one coming.
But this one was approved by the city, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know that the other one down on Bill's Chapel, I don't know if it was a cluster option or PUD.
Well, all of them.
But, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
But, um, there's not many of them that I can recall right off. Turner Homes three twenty-one. Yeah, but some...
Yeah.
Anybody in the public wanna comment? Thoughts?
I'll give you, I'll give you from the county commission perspective, where we worked so hard to get our uniform lot size at the half acre minimum. And if, if he can zoom out of the picture a little bit, can't, that's all right too. Ryan's point, he said, instead of being house after house after house after house, that's exactly what that is, and they took the floodplain part in this particular instance. And it's just grown up pines and woods and scrub wood, which is, you know, going to fall over time. But it'll be of no value or benefit to the development whatsoever, except it's gonna be a cost to maintain over, over the years. They actually have two retention ponds, Jim. They've got one on the backside too, right? And it's nothing back there but just a retention pond. There's no more woods or anything back. So the conversation that we had on our end, who does, who does the cluster benefit other than the developer? And I'll speak only for myself. I don't know if it benefits anybody but the developer. It lets them have the smaller lots. They have to give up a little acreage, but you can see, if they've got the right topo, they just give up what they couldn't use anyhow. So they still get the benefit of more lots, more money. And then long-term, as Leon said, the problem will someday be somebody else's. I, I think the, I, I wanna be cautious, but I do know that Jim can correct me on this if I'm wrong. I think mostly what we heard at our meeting was, probably don't even need them. But I'm speaking for me alone, I'm not speaking for any other commission.
Well, if there's that much problem, why don't we not just do away with it?
I hate to inject myself. I would love to see him go. You're gonna have this one three twenty-one over here when they get it done, and that, theirs was the same way, this Turner one's the most recent one we've done. They got their R-two, they got all their special exception, and their open space is the retention pond. And, and the little children are gonna be playing in the retention pond. Nobody's gonna grow up, it's gonna have to be maintained. I, I don't see any benefit to it, but that's just me speaking.
I, I guess if you wanted to hypothetically inject any benefit, it would most likely just be for a property owner that wanted a fifteen thousand square foot lot of privilege that they had, other than the developer, saving money. A fifteen thousand square foot lot compared to twenty-one seven eighty one, six thousand seven hundred and eighty square feet.
Are these, are these clusters, and forgive me for not looking this up online, but are these clusters, where are they allowed currently?
We, in the R-two zone only. As you know, it's a new zone, so we've been rezoning to the R-two. And you do have to have sewer availability to do that. So...
So somewhat limited.
So eleven, maybe seventy, uh, three twenty-one and, and other areas, but that's where you would see them. Obviously, a part of Bill's Chapel, I don't know how much further sewer goes. I don't, I don't know that it crosses the inlet.
There is currently a moratorium on any clusters until you all reach a conclusion to send back to others. We take a vote on something, so as far as moratoriums go, you know, some tells we can't do that, but apparently we can and did.
So before I look into saying, well, what, trying to think of a way to make a open space something other than wasteland, is the thought to, that we should keep these?
I don't see why, but, I don't see they benefit anybody unless there's some designated use that somebody maintains and has to pay for. I don't know how you do that.
So that's a... I've also thought into that, but ultimately, you know, all you're, all I would know to do is try and create a percentage of open space that has to be usable. But then again, how do you designate how you use it?
Yeah.
I mean, it's feature on thought and process, but it all boils down to the future, like Mr. Shields said, if nobody maintains that we have open space that was supposed to be parks and pavilions and other developments, that is just a, a grown-up lot.
Or a wasteland.
It is.
My opinion would be to remove them completely. It makes everything simpler.
Would, uh, next month is October, would you be at post, uh, another meeting regarding this, just to get clarification on what directions we might wanna take? If anybody's got any ideas, email me. We did one more five o'clock workshop, would you be opposed to that?
I'd like that.
I mean, if, if all is not good, it requires something else, I would make some good... I'll sit down this way, thank you.
I'm gonna put it on my camera ring this time.
Thank you. You, you can always, you can go through the...
Well, I saw...
As a matter of fact, if you'd like to take this...
I saw the...
You done more research. And then you were right to say, or they're rigs, rigs on... At least it would look like a three...
If we're gonna, if we're gonna have it, we need to make it, we need to have a reason to have it, otherwise, otherwise, then there's no reason.
It talks about environmental resource, so I can protect some of the natural resources of beauty.
If you're, you're getting sewer, then you're not likely to be in an area to have...
Yeah. You know, there's a housing down in there on the river.
What's your, what's your requirement for any change?
What's the name of that town? Tennessee's Ash.
That's Tennessee.
Yeah. That, that place is just mad, those boys are out there every day.
That's where I was.
I wouldn't change it for nothing. You don't work in, you don't work in Jellystone National.
No, I work for the HOA.
Cause that's what's safe. Any workers who've been on that, I can tell you.
At Tennessee National.
She's sitting there though.
Not this many, they just got it down high. The city, you've got, you've got your golf course, and you've got those people, then you've got the people that maintain that. That's outside, that's an outside country.
That's her, she's a wild, big word, but you think, that's her all the time. Mark is a...
Two piles, class, two piles.
I would have never guessed that. I would have said... If you play golf, for half a member, it's about seventeen dollars. The place, one of us, forty thousand dollars per hour. Maybe if you're socially, if you're gonna play socially.
It's five-thirty, so we will call the Loudoun County Regional Planning Commission to order. Would you stand with me, please, and pledge allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Ryan Bright.
Here.
Joe Brooks.
Here.
Todd Kennedy.
Here.
Keith Buckles.
Here.
Pam McNew.
Here.
John Napier.
Here.
Leon Shields.
Here.
Mike Waller.
Here.
Jimmy Williams.
Here.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from the August twelve meeting?
Some move.
Is there a second?
I say a cut.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Number three, planned agenda items. Oppose nay. Number three, planned agenda items. A subdivision plan for three lots applicant property owner Justin Kennedy, tax map zero fifty-eight, parcel zero sixty point zero zero, located at one ninety-five Ritchie Road, A two rural residential district, district four. Mr. Kennedy.
Uh, Mr. Kennedy couldn't make it. I'm James A. I'm sort of there.
Okay.
So we take them, approximately about six acres, divide it into three lots, the zoning is A two, which means two point five acres. Uh, so we, uh, divide these lots and we'll have about three acres apiece.
Good to go?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a move in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. You're good to go. B subdivision plan for three lots applicant Leah Metcalf, property owner Mary Dunsmore, tax map zero one three, parcel zero twenty-two point zero two, located Dunsmore Road, A two rural residential district, district five. Miss, uh, Miss Metcalf or Miss Dunsmore here? Jim, what do you think?
These are, they submitted a compliant plan. They're all over two and a half acres. They're bringing bus county approved group, so. It's in good shape.
motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. C commercial site plan applicant Russ Edens, property owner Gerald, uh, General Shale Brick, tax map zero zero four, parcel zero zero eight one zero one, located Hickory Creek Road, C two general commercial district, district five. Gentlemen.
Good evening. Uh, I'm Russ Edens with Can Can. And I'm here with Perry Beverley and Steve Samuel with Two Hundred Shale. We are seeking approval for a site plan, uh, for, uh, a distribution yard. This time, uh, we helped comment to it. The previous use was like a, a yard where Patrick Matthews dropped the trailers overnight, picking up the next day. Yeah, we're proceeding with approval for this distribution yard.
Mr. Chairman, I think this fitting in, in this industrial park, and I think General Shale will be a much, uh, more aesthetically pleasing business there and, and approve area. I make a motion to approve.
Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. D rezon request from A two to A three applicant property owner, uh, Michael Akins, tax map zero twenty-seven, parcel zero eight one point zero zero, located twenty-two zero two, Old Greenback Road, A two rural residential district. Mr. Akins.
Yes, sir.
What you got?
I'm going to sell two acres. Just showing on this map here that that going out through there is an unnamed county road. Just showing on this black map right here. And I want to sell two acres of it. I'm, I can't take here. I'll get too old to take here with all anymore. I'm going to keep an acre and three quarters and sell two acres. They, they've got road in front of you. There's somebody that lives out past me that uses that road every day.
Is it a county road, Jim?
As far as I, uh, speaking with Mr. Pittman, it's not a county road.
It's a, it's a unnamed county road on this black map right here.
Over and back road is the county road. They do not maintain that road. It's not a part of the county road system.
Is it gravel or what?
Yeah, it's gravel.
And so, so there will be issues in, in, in sub body.
There's a water line runs all the way out through there to the mile and acre. It'll pass me.
How's it named? Is it a easement or what is it?
Thirty foot unnamed county road.
He just said that it's not a county road.
Unnamed county road.
He said it wasn't a county road.
Yeah, i- i- it might call it that, but it's not a county accepted road. So that gets into an issue of sub dividing because it's not on a county accepted or approved road. So we would have issues. We're going to have an issue. It, it, right now, we're trying to resume, but we'll have issues even sub dividing. It had to, variance even subdivide the lot because it does not apply to a county approved road.
So even though there's a, there's a gap there where I guess a road could have been or should have been or whatever. The road that, the county road doesn't exist, but there's public or non-privately owned land there.
Yeah, there's, there's a roadway through there. I guess it's just an unapproved roadway.
Right. So he doesn't have any county road frontage period?
No.
Can we legally do this?
Well, I mean, if you, you can rezon it, but it's still, uh, if you can't subdivide, you don't need to rezon it.
Yeah. So any rezoning would be contingent upon, um, a subdivision being approved.
Yeah.
We can't do that.
Right. It'd have to bring a subdivision flat, then it'd have to have a variance from regulations because it doesn't have frontage on an approved road, you know? We have a roadway up through there. I don't know how that was created or what. Uh, but it's unimproved and I don't know that anyone's going to improve it to a county standard so it can be accepted.
Go ahead. I just want to say it seems like a non-starter. It seems like to me we're stuck. If we approve this tonight, it's going to get denied when it comes time for it to subdivide it.
Right.
So I, I think, I would make a motion to deny, deny the request.
Second. Got a motion to deny the request and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. E commercial site plan applicant property owner Andrew Brackett, tax map zero six eight, parcel zero one zero point zero zero, located Wade Road, C two general commercial district, district four.
She sent an email.
Andrew Brackett. Go ahead.
Uh, if we're seeking for approval.
He's back for approval for his site plan. We've discussed this at nauseam. Uh, Phil reviewed the site plan. He's got everything in order, ready to develop the site.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay.
Nay.
Two nays. Three nays, three nays. Five three. Four county commission action on planning commission recommendations. Jim.
Sorry about that. Um, they accepted our recommendations we sent forward, um, and voted for a moratorium on cluster developments until we come back with any recommendations. I will say that we're going to see a cluster development. We've, we've rezoned and done a special exception for the property that we discussed, the flats submitted for review. That should be on our planning commission next month for cluster development.
Now let's still be active.
Mr. Brooks, I think, um, I'll, I'll put it on the agenda.
You're saying, you're saying is, is what active, the moratorium? No, that we've got a site plan coming next month for a.
We have a flat coming.
And we've got a moratorium, so I didn't know.
I'll place it on the agenda until I'm directed otherwise.
Building activity?
We'll have nothing to add.
Additional comments from the public? Update from the planning department?
Well, enough of that at this time.
Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Come on.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I will adjourn.
Hey, Jim, I don't think the microphone is on for the video. I just got a text.
You know, church sits upon the hill there, high land. There's a road turns there and I don't know. If you go around this curve, there's a road turns up through here. That may be Jackson, Ben Jackson. Okay, but Old Greenback. There used to be a church there, I think. You know where it is.
Yeah, but we're about to, like, cemetery.
Oh, he said they some, one buried down there somewhere.
The only revolution.
Okay.
You ready? Need to call the Loudoun County Board of Zoning Appeals to Order. And if you're going to speak on any subjects, need to stand and be sworn, raise your right hand and be sworn in. You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you may now give and the cause is now pending before this commission be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I swear.
Thank you. I got ahead of myself. I didn't y'all.
Ryan Bright.
Here.
Jim Brooks.
Here.
John Napier.
Here.
Leon Shields.
Here.
Mike Waller.
Here.
Everybody read the minutes?
I read them and I approve. I'm okay. Move.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Planned agenda items, variance request for seventeen foot sign height applicant Lamar Advertising, property owner James Evelyn, tax map zero one five, parcel two two three point zero zero, locate Hoskis Valley Road, C two general commercial district, district five. Come up here and tell us your name, what you're going to do.
Hi, my name is Melissa Settle. I'm a real estate manager for Lamar Advertising in Knoxville. We had an existing outdoor advertising structure there that fell. It was built on wooden poles that fell near one of the storms. So we had applied to rebuild that structure and it would be basically the same height it was. But I guess the ordinance might have changed so the total overall height I believe was supposed to be forty feet. And the property is really low, so we are requesting a seventeen foot variance. The pole will be forty feet, the sign is fourteen, and then three feet of, of skirting. It wouldn't be any higher than the other sign was. It'll make it just at eye level.
Mr. Chairman, due to the replacement, this storm damages and that, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any more comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
On the black line. Item B, variance request for automated pool cover instead of fence, applicant property owner Ryan and Carla Kara Allen, tax map zero one three, parcel zero two four point zero zero, located five oh two oh Cardwell Chapel Road, A two rural residential district, district five.
Sorry, went outside a little bit. Um, so we're putting a pool in our backyard. We've got three children and trying to, uh, make our house accommodable for our children as we grow and, and as we, uh, raise our children. And, uh, the current standard only allows for a pool fence to have to be erected. We're looking for an A S T M approved, uh, safety cover. That does meet the A S T M guidelines of a thousand pounds or greater or, uh, of a thousand pounds. Um, I've gotten approval from my insurance carrier to install a cover, um, as long as it meets A S T M standards, which the contractor that we have, um, worked with, which is at Integral Pools, has an A S T M approved cool pool cover. Um, I have that here for, to, to provide to you guys as well, uh, for your documentation to show that they are in, um, in accordance for that and just seeking approval.
Jim.
Our regulations merely state that, uh, four foot fence enclosure. I know there's other jurisdictions that allow, uh, the pool covers as he's discussing. Ours does not. It's not been updated. I don't know if that's something planning commission might want to address, uh, but that's why he's here. The only option we have was for the four foot fence.
Did you say this has been done before?
Yes, sir.
It's not anything that you.
Let me, let me ask you a question.
In other, on other systems, not here.
Did what now?
I was answering John's, on other jurisdictions, I think.
You build a pool. And you've got it uncovered. What's going to happen? Somebody falls in it?
It has the, the switch that's just currently temporary in position, has a lock. I work for an insurance carrier myself. I'm a safety.
So you're saying that every time you leave the pool, you're going to put the cover?
Absolutely. I have three children and I care for them just as much as you do. Your children are your family. And as, as a certified safety professional, it's been my board of ethics that I follow those kinds of things. I am known to be a pest in my neighborhood, in my area. I call those things out.
Just hesitant that you'll do that when you're gone for an hour. Just you go inside, dig, get lunch. And the pool's uncovered and some neighbor gets in, not necessarily your kids, because they're inside eating lunch with you, but I just, to me, you forget to do that. And I know you, I hope you never will, but one night you're going to go to bed and you say, oh, I got to do the pool.
Well, I, I completely understand, sir. I have video coverage of my, of my backyard right now. Uh, twenty-four seven monitor that sends me alerts when someone walks in my backyard. And I would be monitoring that just like anybody else with their backyard. As long as my fiber internet stays up, I'll be able to be aware. I have a key. We have it at the house. We are going to do the cover. We'll have to put the fence. If you guys say nay, then we'll do as, as required. Uh, but we already have moved forward. The pool is in, the water is in. We are ready to roll forward and concrete. We started a week and a half ago. It's a private basketball. I will do as told, but we are asking variance that other counties and other states have approved and adopted. I would care, I would be glad to give you as a copy of, uh, each one of you a copy of my insurance company saying that they approve it. And other carriers have accepted that in other states as well.
I think my, my comment, I, I get that the cover is probably the, the new technology going forward, a lot of people's going to do. But what I worry about is, is what a reg says. And if some case that an accident happened and a neighboring kid or even an adult fell and, and drowned in that pool, the liability that the county has of violating its own regulation with given a variance of the cover versus fence, I worry about not necessarily. It, it's, what does it create? Are we better off to accommodate you by changing the regulation versus just give a variance? So let's change the reg, reread with whatever the latest technology is approved by the board and take the word four foot fence out of reg. So that way it's not a liability issue. You owe us in case an accident happens. What, what's your thought?
Yeah, I mean, problem with variances, it's a special land feature or hardship, something of that nature. I don't know if this qualifies. And like you said, if, if we're going to allow this, if it's a, if the planning commission feels like we should update our regulations to include this, that's what we ought to do is change the reg rather than break variances.
I, where I'm going with it is, I think there's other people going to follow with you. And I think there's other, other people going to want it, but I think right now, if we make this approval, we're on the hook if somebody gets killed there. Because we violated our own regulation, gave him a special variance for a cover. So I think we need to look at the reg so that way we can open the door for other potential taxpayers like you that want to come in and, and go with that new technology and do those different devices. I'm, I'm good either way. I just worry about the long-term liability.
And I'm not reviewing the state law currently. At one time, the state of Tennessee had a regulation requiring fence enclosure. I believe it went away at one point. I don't know that it's ever came back. Uh, they went away from the fence enclosure to a pool.
I think, I think the loss, I think the civil liability comes back to us as the body granting him permission. It's not to the insurance company that weighs it. I think it's us puts on a hook that we're get, we're violating our own regulation to give him a grant to not put up the safety fence.
I agree with Leon. I, and, and I think, my opinion, probably the pool cover is safer than a four foot fence.
From a maintenance standpoint.
But.
Animals.
Like Leon says, you know, we've got a regulation in there for a four foot fence and we grant a pool cover. What happens if somebody gets drowned?
I'd be a hundred percent for rewriting that reg to consider other devices. And not just, the problem is the reg just calls the four foot fence.
The, sorry to interrupt, the pool covers do allow for the alarm to still be installed and operational. So, that would be in addition to the cover.
If the cover's open, it has the alarm work on the cover?
It goes down. We would put it at the end where the mechanism is not. So, if we mess up to that, we just go over.
I'd be for changing the reg.
We'll look into
Or update, let me rework it. I'd be for updating the reg.
To say four foot enclosure.
To a latest safety device.
And or approved safety devices.
The county commission will have to be the one that changes that regulation?
We'll bring it to planning commission first for recommendation, then county commission for approval.
I would support that.
What kind of situation is he in, placing him on hold until that reg's changed? Do you not, have you already got a CO for your house? Or you already currently live there?
We moved in.
He just doesn't have a
He would be an approved swimming pool.
For his pool yet. So, I don't know at this point if he
Or is it going to be that big a deal? I mean, except him.
Yeah. How many pool days are left? You know?
You don't want to know where I'm from. It's been till sixty degrees of water temperature.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, I guess it's a matter of him getting his certification, but he's, to update the reg, you're two months away. So, we won't be able to approve this file on his pool until such time the regulations
If he's in violation, he gets a letter from the codes office?
He's probably going to get a letter if we find out he's in violation, yes. I have no idea. He's not called for an inspection.
Just turn it down, let him do whatever he wants to do.
I make a motion, we deny the said request, however we consider, update the regulation.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. All is likewise.
Yeah. Thank you.
Let's see. Item C, variance request for thirteen foot front yard setback, six yard, six foot side yard setback, and twenty foot rear yard setback, applicant property owner Clay and Joan Ward, tax map zero three six parcel zero one seven point zero zero. Located one twenty-one Alexander Road, A one agriculture forestry district, F one floodway district, district three.
Yes, sir. I appreciate you all giving it opportunity. We've owned this property about twenty-five years. Our job, we planned to do this way back. I actually had a, an application that was so old, it still had the hundred dollar thing on it. But that would just kind of give you an idea. We've been planning this for a long time. Our jobs took us away. We're now back, ready to build our forever home. This is a, a unique neighborhood. It's a private drive. It's got seven houses on it. And everybody has upgraded their house, and we would like to do the same. Where we are right now is this is, this seventeen is the lot, okay? And you'll notice all of the houses are offset to the right to accommodate septic. And these three houses right here, well, first of all, I need to start with the road easement. That's the first one you have. I stated that I needed thirteen foot, but it actually should be eighteen, because the guy that did the write-up, he didn't take into consideration property line went all the way to the road. So, it should be, or halfway to the road, so it's eighteen foot instead of thirteen. Okay? Lot nineteen, which is to, up to the far right, not, that, right there. They have a variance, I think it's twenty foot or right there at eighteen or twenty foot as well. When you come back, moving to the side easement. Currently, we're at fifteen seven. We're asking for it to be six on the right-hand side. Right there, yes. And we were also turning the house to line it up with the property line. The house to the right is about ninety feet away from this house, or from the property line. Now, and the Yes, and the house on to our left, he has shifted his house this way, and it's about a six foot variance as well. To our property. But roughly, both properties are at least fifty foot away, when you consider the house. The house is fifty foot. So, it's a very unique property, and that's the reason we're asking for this variance. The next item we're asking for is along the water. I stated twenty foot. It's actually the eight twenty line. I said the eight twenty-two line, because that's what they had on my nineteen ninety-nine survey. But it's basically the flood line. And we have no intentions of going down to the flood line. All we want to do is that left corner of our house, touch it or get close to it. The house to the right, there's right corner touches the eight twenty line. The house to the left, or excuse me, right, it touches as well as to the left. Both of them touch. The house to the left, he has like a eleven and a half foot variance off of the property line. And I'm just asking to go to the eight twenty, which is probably about twenty-five foot off of the property line. I think I've hit about it. We're not asking for anything that hadn't been already approved, or close to being approved. And that's, we're just wanting to build our retirement home. We're wanting to do one level living, because we're getting to that age. And we are putting it on a basement, but the whole living area we're focusing on is in a one level.
So, there's not an existing house here?
Yes, there is.
You're going to tear it down?
Yes, sir. And that was on, I think, one of the prior Okay, there, I think there is one already there.
And it damaged currently?
Yes. And a tree fell on it, so it's going to be, we've got to tear it down. But we need to get the variances to replace it.
Lot of variances.
Yeah, and just real quick, while y'all think about this, what he's asking is to be six foot seven off the property line, which is actually an eighteen, let's see, the side, which is actually a fourteen foot variance. Because the side yard's required to be twenty. His rear yard is required to be thirty in this zoning, and his front yard is required to be forty. So, this, the seventeen on the front should actually be a variance of twenty-two feet from the regulation. The side should be a fourteen foot variance from the regulation. And the rear, if he's only going to be, what he mentioned earlier, would it actually be a five foot variance off the rear? So, some of the writing on the request is definitely from the, actually the scripts you all are seeing. And I believe the current house is fifteen off the side, right? Yes. Okay. Or fourteen, yeah, fifteen.
Is the house you're building bigger than the one that's out?
It is, it is bigger. Most of it is, as far as the heated square foot, it's probably two hundred more square feet. But there is a deck, a covered deck on the back that I'd like to put in a garage, because the current one does not have a garage.
Anybody else? Anybody in the audience?
Jim?
And after, as he said, so you know, when we discussed this, the biggest thing might be the amount of variance requested, for lack of better words. But he is correct in stating there are other homes on this, this same lot that have had variances for the front yards. And even the one that, the first one on the road there, I think, had a side yard variance also that we reviewed. So, I guess the biggest thing is, is just your all's judgment and its replacement and the amount of variance requested. This is probably, probably more on the side yard as opposed to maybe the even the front or the rear.
So, why are you moving, I mean, like, what is the, what's your reasoning for sticking it so close to the side yard, you know?
It's still, it's for septic.
Well, I mean, well, why is the septic a problem in this, in the current house? I mean, that's my question. So, I mean, if the justification is moving because of the septic, then, you know, the septic's here now.
Yeah.
So, that's my, that's my question.
It's for the garage and to add the additional space.
So, this, is this right here including the garage?
Which one? That one?
That one.
Yes, yes, that is including the garage, yes.
Well, that's what Ryan's asking. Why are you so close on this side and not on this side? Why keep you spaced?
The septic, I want to leave room for the septic and the expansion.
And that's the only place you can put the septic?
Yes.
Where is it, where is it now?
It's, it's over here on this left side, but I've got to add and rework some, yes.
And you've already got a TDEC letter and a drawing for that?
I've discussed that with TDEC, but yes, we're in discussions with
So, it's, there's not an existing septic tank?
There is an existing septic, and it will be a, what do they call it, a rework or, or, there is an existing one, yes. Building operations, operations, yes. And the actual, like I said, the actual heated square foot is only like two hundred more than it was existing there. And that's causing us to move to the right. Of course, there's ninety foot between this line and the neighboring house.
I'm going to make a motion that since there are others on that road that had variances, that we grant this one.
Got a motion? Got a second?
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. All is likewise.
I have all time with three variances. Something surely can be done to negate the variances, but anyway, everybody else feel different. I'll go, no.
Thank you.
Item D, variance request for four foot side setback, side yard setback, applicant Kelly Hargus, property owner Thomas Watts, tax map zero four three parcel zero eight five point zero zero, located forty-nine fifty Coitie Road, A one agriculture forestry district, district three.
That's a mess, isn't it? Up there now. I've got a builder. I'm putting an addition onto the house, and I found out with a site survey, three, four, five feet over.
We're, the foundation, excluding the carport and its plans, is two and a half feet over the twenty foot setback. So, we're asking for a reduction by four feet, reduce the setback from twenty feet to four feet in that triangular area. And then, we should also preface by saying that it's the intention to adjust the property lines to recorded flats, make some property line adjustments, because the surrounding property and other family members have the other houses that are, see on the tax map there, and we want to move these lines where then it won't be a conflict. This is just to get a builder going.
Builder, he wanted to start two weeks ago, so we're just trying to get variance until I can get to the line, but we can get to the line.
So, it's really a temporary variance?
Yeah.
Make a motion, give variance six months. Second.
Any more discussion? Anybody in the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is likewise.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jim?
No, sir.
Anybody else do anything? Your motion adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
How are you, Karen?
We are.
I saw your name on there.
How are you, sir?
Oh, yeah, getting older.
Yeah, still burning, moving out all of these wood.
Good seeing you too.
He had me out with a company. He did some survey next March day where I live. Of course, they give you, they give you
Any more stuff planned for him, so he can
You can tell me tomorrow. Because I got to take these minutes. I need to have two minutes to do what.